Wednesday, October 14th at 6 o'clock. This is the Finance and Operations Committee of the National Board of Education. And I'll take roll call. Paula Johnson.
Present.
Present. And Ray Garino. Ray might be coming late. Dottie Oden is here, so we have two members. We have a quorum, so we will start the meeting. And the first issue is Pennechuck Middle School Solar Proposal. And I believe Mr. Weeks is back with us, and he has another presentation for us. It's good to see you again, Mr. Weeks.
Thank you very much for the opportunity to come back before you. And if I may, I will share my screen. Let me just tune right in here. I apologize. Up, here it is. Sometimes, okay, I think the permissions are set up to let me do this. So are you now able to see my screen still there for National School District?
Yes.
Great. Well, I did very much appreciate the chance to present to this committee over a year ago as we were designing and happily now completing the construction on the first two systems for the school district. Those are, of course, for Fairgrounds Middle School and Dr. Crisp Elementary School. The format here is similar, and I can, I think, skip over some of the basic background slides. But in case there are a few folks here who didn't see the first presentation or do want to go into a little more of the background, I'm, of course, more than happy to spend more time on it. But let me provide just some quick background on this conversation to rewind two years now. Revision Energy was fortunate to be one of several solar companies that bid with the city of Nashua when the city went out to a competitive RFP for, at that point, more than 20 city properties that they identified as potential solar locations. That process went through several months of bidding there, and Revision was very honored to be selected to build each of the projects for the city. It was not nearly that many, just on account of roof readiness and structural issues and things like that, but that's par for the course. And around that time, we had also had some preliminary conversations going back even earlier with Sean Smith and members of the staff who were doing some preliminary analysis or examination of solar opportunities for the schools. Of course, with 17 schools, each with different roof configurations and roof ages, it obviously didn't make sense to pursue several or the entire portfolio at one time. Occasionally, when we work with other school districts, we'll do several at a time. But just given the configuration and the current age of the various roofs, I think the school district was very wise to take a stepwise approach, looking at those roofs that were the newest and then waiting on those that were older until the time that they are regularly scheduled to be replaced and would be ideal candidates for solar. So needless to say, we were, again, glad to go through a robust RFP process with the city and then to present to the school board these two opportunities, which are, again, completing construction now. I did want to issue an invitation if any members of this committee or other school board members, Board of Education members, are interested in touring those. The panels are all down. We're doing the final electrical work at both of them. On Friday, we'll do the shutdown. We're bringing in a backup generator to power Dr. Crisp while we do a fairly technical interconnection to connect the nearly 1,000 panels on the roof to the school electrical system. So I'm happy to provide just some more information and on-the-ground education on those projects, if that's of interest. I was asking our project manager, Bobby, if he could send me the latest photos on those. They may actually arrive as we're meeting. He was having a little trouble digging them up this afternoon. My mistake for not reaching out to him sooner, but more than happy to share details on the process of those. But very grateful that we could work with you on those and look forward to getting them turned on in the next few weeks. I don't need to spend much time on the background. Just some brief updates since we last met. Revision is now close to 10,000 projects installed, mostly solar, including smaller residential projects, but complementary systems as well on the thermal and transportation side. Our vision, of course, is to help towns and cities and schools and businesses make the transition to clean energy, to save money. 275 co-owners. We're proud that the majority of our team are electricians and apprentices who build our systems and live here, many of them in Southern New Hampshire and in the Seacoast, as we also work up in Maine and in Massachusetts. And I think I mentioned some of these projects. I don't need to go into detail, but since we last met, Revision has been honored to receive several additional competitive bids. The city of Concord is moving forward at their wastewater treatment plant. The city of Keene, which I didn't provide details of right here, but they're also doing a large project at their wastewater treatment plant. We're in the midst of two large projects with the town of Hanover, and the city of Dover is also expanding to several of their schools after the high school system, which actually, until this afternoon, was the largest rooftop system in New Hampshire. I just came from an unveiling at Bellevance Beverage, an old Nashua company which has their new distribution facility in Londonderry, which is now slightly larger than the city of Dover. So we've managed to keep busy and would be very honored to continue with the school district. I'll just flip right ahead. So the format here is similar, but I thought it would be of interest to this committee to look in a little bit of detail at the two middle schools that, on the guidance of Dan Donovan and Sean Smith, since one is scheduled for significant renovations next year, Pennechuck, of course, and the other, the New Middle School, is set to start construction next year into 2022. And so both would be solar-ready. That's to say, the roofs would be ready for solar in either '21 or '22, even potentially early '23, depending on the timeline on the New Middle School. The, I think, reason for this presentation tonight and the reason that we are looking ahead, in the case of Pennechuck, next year, so we would customarily be planning six to nine months out, in the case of New Middle School, an additional year out. The reason for that tonight is, as you probably recall, these projects, like virtually every project we do for a city or town or school, are financed through power purchase agreements, PPAs, where instead of the district putting up any money, an impact investor comes alongside. We have families and some businesses in the local area who have the tax liability based on their assets, and so they share our mission, and so they put up the capital to finance these projects, and they continue to own and operate them for at least five years. But their financials are significantly impacted by the federal investment tax credit. And as some of you know, that credit is stepping down over the period of the next few years. It's currently at 26%. On January 1st, it goes to 22%, and then all the way to 10%. However, the IRS did establish, and this has been used by Revision and hundreds of other solar companies around the country, a process which they call Safe Harbor, where provided that a project is under contract and that the partner, in this case, Revision, has purchased the panels for the project or other major components, made a significant cash-out lay to demonstrate to the IRS that this project is really happening and happening and be skin in the game. Provided we do that, then the Safe Harbor provision allows for construction to occur over the next two, even three years, if needed. And so for that reason, we have the opportunity with our impact investor to, since these projects, these schools will be ready for solar in the next year and two to three years with the New Middle School, we have the opportunity to secure the full tax credit before it goes down to 22 and then 10%. And Revision will essentially warehouse the solar panels and have them ready for the installation when these two projects are ready. So that's a little bit of the investor context, why it makes financial sense to the school district to potentially move forward now. As the tax credits decline, the cost in terms of the PPA rate, which the school pays to purchase the electricity, a bit less than they pay the utility, that cost goes up to account for less in tax incentives for the investor. So happy to go into more detail if helpful, but that's really the reason why Dan Donovan and Sean Smith asked us to prepare these designs over the last few months, and now we're grateful to take them back to the committee. Pennechuck, as you see, we've simply overlaid the renovation plans here. The grade sections at the north and south, top and bottom, and on the east side where we don't have panels, those are the additions. As you know, also some small additions off the gym over to the east side. And you can see the flat roof sections have a little bit of spacing between panels. The pitch roof sections, as you all know from the school, facing the road there, are flush-mounted. Based on the pitch, we can mount the panels flush together. So it's a combination of flat and pitched. And all told, this is a fairly sizable system of 662 kilowatts. That's close to 1,800 panels. That's the panel capacity. The AC inverter capacity is 500 kilowatts. That's a standard ratio that we use and have done with the other schools. And 500 kilowatts is relevant. We've designed not to exceed 500 because once we cross that threshold, the utility ever-source charges an additional $100,000 for utility equipment, specifically a recloser, which is not required for systems up to 500. So we think this is an optimal design. Theoretically, it could be expanded a little bit, but we do want to keep the inverter sizing below 500, and this would produce about 750,000 kilowatt-hours of electricity per year. For reference, this is actually quite close in size to the Fairgrounds Middle School As I did discuss a little bit last year, the production obviously varies month to month. We build our production model based on the industry standard modeling software, where we use weather data for the last 40 years for Southern New Hampshire to essentially solve for the number of sunlight hours per year in an average year here in Nashua. And naturally, in the winter months, the bar graph on the left, you see January, February, and then December at the end. We have significant snow cover historically. That's been a bit less in recent years, but we do want to conservatively model. So in those months, we're just assuming the panels are significantly reduced in their output because of that snow, as well as shorter daylight, shorter days. We don't want Dan's team to worry about going up on the roof and shoveling those panels at any point, so we just build that into the model, and that gives you your monthly production. In the upper right, the sources of loss, soiling is the biggest factor, and that's simply snow cover, a little bit of a dust or pollen factor in the spring as well. So those are some of the technical specifications for Pennechuck. And then I apologize, the image is a little bit fuzzy here. This is naturally a preliminary design because we don't yet have the full architectural plan set for the New Middle School. We'll look forward to delving into that as those plans are finalized. But we've utilized the prime roof sections. So there are some additional roof sections which are designed to be a little bit lower, which would have some shading impacts. And so this is a, we feel this is a conservative design. It will change, of course, to some extent. This total is 512 kilowatts, so a little bit smaller than Pennechuck and than the current Fairgrounds project, and would produce 600, just over 600,000 kilowatt-hours per Naturally, there will be spacing for the rooftop units. We don't yet have that roof plan, so plenty of minor changes. We wouldn't expect major changes unless the plan, the architectural, has changed significantly. And then a similar chart here. Again, it's the same flat roof design as we're doing at Fairgrounds and at Dr. Crisp, so we build in that low winter production on account of snow. And if we have the chance to welcome some of you onto the roof, you'll see, looks fairly similar to these. The one difference, you can't see it particularly well, but the racking we're using on these projects, you see over Contemporary Automotive in Milford and Tupelo up in Derry and Wirebelt and Londonderry, these are an EcoLibrium Eco-Foot racking system. Works perfectly well, but since, actually, we're very excited that Fairgrounds is one of our first projects where we deployed a new racking system called Panelcloth. It's actually manufactured about 50 miles from here in northern Mass. And that system requires far fewer additional ballast blocks. The long story short is, we only add about two and a half pounds per square foot to the roof, as opposed to roughly five pounds per square foot at previous installations like you see here. That was a little bit of an issue at Fairgrounds. There were some sections where we were a little concerned about structural. We obviously went through the full structural engineering review. We did stay off a couple of sections, even with the lighter racking for that reason. By contrast, Dr. Crisp is built like a tank and had no issues passing structural. But naturally, we don't want the school to have to, the district to have to spend additional money upsizing your steel girders, et cetera. So this racking system, we think, is, will work well for these projects. And then the other major component, of course, is the inverters transferring that DC power from the panels into AC or alternating current. And through them, we will directly feed the building loads, meaning that whenever there's the need for electricity and the sun is shining, the buildings will be powered by solar. On peak days, especially in the summer, where utilization is generally less for a school, that excess power will be sold to the grid, powering the neighboring homes. In winter, at nighttime, when there's snow on the panels, obviously, the schools will just continue to purchase the difference, the power that they need from ever-source as they would otherwise do. So that's, hopefully, fairly familiar, the major components here. We are continuing to install the REC solar panels, which we've now put a few thousand of on your two roofs. We've done, in all, a few hundred thousand of these panels, and they've performed very well so far, so we feel good about them. Similar with the SolarEdge inverters in the timeline. Any questions on the current designs that we're presenting?
Paula, do you have any questions?
Not yet. I'm still listening. I'm still listening. Thank you.
And I forgot to mention, I apologize, that Mr. Donovan, our CEO, is here, and Sean Smith, who's head of plant operations for us, is also attending along with our administrative assistant, Ms. Cincella, who runs everything in the district. Nope, I guess, again, can you remind me, what happens should one of these panels get damaged or need to be replaced?
Thank you, Dottie, for that question. The panels come with a 25-year production warranty. That's from the manufacturer. So if they're not meeting their production targets, which are between 85 and 90% in 25 years, and then it's a half a percent per year in allowable degradation, so to speak. So if they're not meeting their target, then the panels themselves are replaced. If there is a damage to a single panel, we do occasionally, you know, rocks or something get thrown, and we'll generally replace them for you. Revision does provide a five-year wraparound warranty. Because we are proposing a power purchase agreement, that PPA financing system, the school actually doesn't have responsibility for the maintenance or for damage. So we have with our investor partners, we provide them the production guarantees in addition to the manufacturer's warranty, and we also provide all of the service they pay our electricians, you know, between $500,000 or $2,000 a year to maintain each of the systems. So if a panel did need to be replaced, that would be the investor's responsibility. They also contract with our team to monitor the performance, and we have a little, it's called a power optimizer on the back of each panel, where we can show exactly how much power an individual panel is putting out, so we can pinpoint if an individual panel is not performing, or similar for the inverters. So in a word, Dottie, that is not the district's responsibility. It is the investor's responsibility, and they also have a strong incentive to ensure the full performance, because they are only selling actual power that is actually delivered to the school. We project what the production will be on which, the basis of which, they build their financial model, but if the system underperforms, then the school doesn't have to buy anticipated or projected power, only actual power that is delivered, and the investor wants to deliver the full amount of power that they projected.
Okay. Thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
Paula, do you have any questions at this point?
I am here. Nope.
No.
I don't think so. I think it's basically the same thing that we heard in the past.
Right.
Yeah.
I just, I just have, I'm just not into renewable energy like the solar panels. So for me, it's kind of hard to support this. The dollars, I like to see what's coming back before I invested more on the dollar, on the return on the dollar. So it's kind of hard for me to say, okay, let's go on with another school, because I haven't seen the return on the dollar and the full function power yet of this. So thank you for the presentation.
Sure, and I'd be happy to review the final part here is the financials. So perhaps I can just review these briefly. So I think you're familiar, I provided this overview before of the mechanism, this power purchase agreement for school districts and municipalities and nonprofits. We've done these for another number of national nonprofits, like the Soup Kitchen and Crossway Church where I go, et cetera. Again, the reason for the power purchase agreement is that districts, because you don't pay income taxes to the IRS, you're not in a position to take advantage of the tax credits, whereas an investor is. And so provided that the investor owns the system for five years, they are fully eligible to take those tax credits and then to pass those discounts, those savings, on to the district. And it's a mechanism that has been actually designed by the federal government several years ago under the Bush administration and has been used now thousands and thousands of times to enable these kinds of projects to happen. The basic components here are that impact investor I've referred to for the city of Nashua, this was Worthen Industries. For the Nashua School District, Wishcamper Companies, so companies in the area that have an interest in seeing more solar deployed and also have the tax liability that they can apply for this purpose. So they have the full responsibility to finance the system. Obviously, they contract with Revision to do the design and engineering. They can then take the tax credits and depreciation. And then the school district commits to buying the power that is produced for at least five years. If the investor owns it for less than five years, they do have to return a portion of their tax credits. But provided they own it for at least five years, the district may then choose, and it's always the district's choice, it's not the investor's choice, whether you want to buy it out or not. And you can choose to do so in year six or at any year thereafter. Can go up to 25 years, which is the panel warranty. It can either even be extended thereafter. So what that means, in essence, is the district never has to make a capital outlay, as this slide summarizes. The second line there, the cost to Nashua School District is zero for both projects. The investor would be paying about $1.3 million at the one, Pennechuck, and about $1 million at the New Middle School to cover the full cost. Rather, what the district pays is that 8.75 cents per kilowatt-hour rate. And then that rises by 2% a year to track with inflation. If the district wishes to buy it out in year six, the earliest opportunity, that would entail a capital expenditure of close to $800,000 for Pennechuck and close to $700,000 for the New Middle School. But by owning your power, by generating for yourself, rather than having the investor own it and sell it to you at a discount, that's the way the district can maximize its savings. But once again, you choose at the time, so you're not making a commitment upfront. So depending on what the capital expenditure priority list is, six years from now, eight or 10, or however many years from now, the district would make a decision about whether it wants to own the systems or not. In the event that you do own them, your savings over the warranty period would be about $1.2 million at Pennechuck and about $1 million at the New Middle School, and then extend it out over the full 40-year lifespan, the minimum commercial lifespan, about 3 and 1/4 million, 3 and 1/3 at Pennechuck, and 2.7 at the New Middle School. And this is for Pennechuck specifically, but the lines go, the top line there in orange is that PPA with the early buyout. So you save a modest amount in the first few years because the PPA rate of 8.75 cents is a bit less than the ever-source rate, which is about 10 and 1/2 cents. So you're saving a few thousand dollars a year, not a major, that's not a reason in itself to go solar, I would suggest. But where the real benefit can be realized is over the longer term, if, again, if you follow that yellow-orange line, in year six, the buyout, that comes to over $600,000, but then you're able to earn that back as you generate and own your own power, so that long-term, your savings climb to over $3 million. Your worst-case scenario is that lighter blue line, where the district decides never to spend money to actually own the system, so you're just continuing to buy the power that they generate. And in that case, your savings are less, around $1 million over the system life, but there's no need to come up with money for a buyout. And the numbers are similar, just a little smaller at the New Middle School, because, of course, it's a slightly smaller system. And then the final way that we show these numbers is based on the kind of long-term unit cost or levelized cost of energy. Over on the right, we have the current costs of grid power. So you see that if the district doesn't do anything, you're spending over 10 cents a kilowatt-hour currently, and then we use the government's projection. This is from the Department of Energy. They project out through 2040 for New Hampshire with inflation of averaging 2 and 1/2% a year. So if that comes to be, we don't know if it will, but that's the best data we have available, then your average cost without solar is that, the light, or, sorry, the light gray line of 16.9 cents per kilowatt-hour. With solar, over on the left side, the best opportunity is if you find, after five years, that you're in a position to buy them out, then when you factor in the cost to buy it out, the initial purchases under the PPA for the electricity that it generates, we do include, although it's optional, an operations and maintenance expense, so Sean's team isn't worrying about monitoring and making sure they're performing as they should, but having Revision do that and having our electricians inspect the systems and do any preventive maintenance, so we build that cost in. We do build in that half a percent per year degradation, so the reduction in the panel output, consistent with the warranty. We also build in a replacement of all the inverters midway through the system life. That's the one major component that will need to be replaced. So when we put all that into the model, your long-term unit cost per kilowatt-hour of electricity would be about 4 and 1/2 cents under that PPA scenario, or your worst case, about 8 cents per kilowatt-hour. And maybe I can just wrap up. I respect very much your question, Paula, about not yet having historical data on the Nashua, the current school project, since they haven't quite been completed and turned on yet. That'll happen in the next several weeks. We are, have, as I noted at the top, done close to 10,000 systems so far, and including for a number of other school districts and, of course, the city of Nashua. So if it would be helpful, we're, of course, happy to supply the historic performance data and savings data for other projects. Hopefully, that would answer at least some of the questions. Again, the main reason why, I believe I was invited to come tonight, is that, given the schedule in that federal tax credit, if the school district decides not to move forward this fall, waits until next year or the year after, the value of the tax credit would go down from, again, 26% now to 22% and then down to 10%. So the cost, that PPA cost to go solar would be a bit more expensive for the district. So that covers pretty much all of it. You know, I just threw in, I shared some of these before, but one thing that Revision, one reason we're excited to always work with school districts is we is we, we do see a lot of job opportunities here and the need to frankly hire a lot more apprentices and electricians. We currently have around 65 going through our apprenticeship program out of Brentwood, New Hampshire. And so we, we see a benefit to, to our own industry from partnering with schools. And we love to provide educational programs if it's of interest to stu, to teachers in particularly STEM classes. All sorts of partnerships that, that may be of interest in signage and things. So we look forward to, to providing signage and a website on the solar production for Fairgrounds and Dr. Crisp. If, if teachers or principals would like to have us in, we're always very happy for, for those opportunities and would hope that in the future we could hire some of your smart graduates out of, out of the Nashua high schools. So I'll, I'll leave it at that, but would of course welcome any more questions you may have.
Okay, thank you, Dan. Sean, did you want to add anything or Mr. Donovan?
Yes, I would if you don't mind. So as Mr. Weeks indicated, the reason we're bringing the Penachuk project forward is first of all, it's a school and run by the City of Nashua Board of Education. And whereas the new middle school is still purview of the Joint Special, although Board of Ed has a lot to say on that one as well. So what we're looking for tonight is your consent to move ahead with this project at Penachuk Middle School. The reason why we're doing it this month, as Mr. Weeks indicated, were the tax credits, because those will go down significantly. And the more weight, the more this is going to cost us effectively. So my recommendation is you approve the power purchase agreement with Revision Energy as provided in your packet.
Okay, thank you. And this will go to the board at our next October meeting. When is that, Mr. Donovan?
October 26th, I believe, is the next full board meeting.
Okay, thank you. And I know Ms. Johnson said she had concerns about it. So I guess I would like to ask, if, if she has concerns, she certainly could vote no at the board. But if she votes no tonight, it will not have the chance to go to the board, to have the entire board vote on it. So Ms., Ms. Johnson, I know you expressed some concerns about the, the cost and, and your support for it. But will you be willing to do that on the, on the grounds that it would go to the full board and you certainly could vote no at that point?
Um, thank you, yeah. Go ahead.
No, the, I was just going to say, just to give the entire board a chance at hearing the presentation or looking at the document, because if, if it comes to, uh, two votes here, we could split it and it wouldn't go to the full board, and I would hate to see that happen.
Yeah, I was just kind of looking to see if I could pull up the rates for Eversource, for the commercial rates. Would this be considered a small commercial or a large commercial? I can't seem to pull up rates. I do better on a computer than I do on an iPad looking for stuff. But I was trying to pull up the rates because I wanted to kind of get an idea, what is the commercial rate? Because you're saying, what, 10%? And I don't know if it's 10% at this point or what exactly is the rates right now?
Good, good question. Thank you, Paula. I, I would be happy to. So these, the new middle school obviously doesn't yet have an Eversource account, but we, we assume that it will be Eversource GV, which is the kind of mid-commercial, LG is the largest. That's usually for large industrial facilities. The current schools are actually split. Fairgrounds is, is LG, as I recall. And Dr. Crisp is G, the smaller commercial as an elementary school. And I wonder if I have just an example here because, and, and I'm obviously happy to, to follow up and, and provide more context, but I, I could pull up a recent electric bill for, Fairgrounds would probably be the most relevant case. I'm, I'm just looking for that. We, we try to keep all of these in our files as we do the analysis. But Paula, I, I believe you are thinking of, a, a bill has several different components to it. And the energy charge itself is, is one portion that currently, when we take the, the last 12 months in Eversource territory, that has averaged around, I'm just looking at it right here. Last 12 months has averaged 8.578 cents. So that's a little bit below the 8.75. However, because the school needs to get the power delivered to it, you may recall from your home electric bill that, that you would receive, we all of us pay transmission, distribution, stranded costs, system benefit, systems benefit, charges. And when you add those together, and you know, I'll just, I'll just share my screen once more.
So let me ask you a question. The amount that you gave me, the 8.578 cents, is that the supplier's cost?
That is the, it's called the default supply, the Eversource supply. For, it changes monthly and that's the last 12 months.
So it's a variable, it's a variable rate. So they're on a variable rate?
That's correct, yep. And that is-
But this, but this is supply cost. It's not all the other ones. It's not all the transmission from the wires to the, to the school and the, the big brunt of it. This is the one that can be separated now by the PUC. That you can go out and find and get the best rates out there now, okay?
That is exactly right. And thi, this might be the, the most useful, if you can see my screen again. So as you can imagine, it's, it's my team's job to, to understand the rates and to track them closely. So we, we track all of the New Hampshire utilities here, running back historically. And so in the Eversource G, that's a slightly higher rate. Although the, the supply portion fluctuates over on, on a six-month schedule. So we run, this is through August, I need to input the September numbers. Have our team do that. But on, on the G side, the supply portion averages last 12 months, 8.476. And then you pay transmission. There's actually three tiers, the first 500 kilowatts, the next 1,000 kilowatt hours, and then anything beyond 1,500. So we're actually just assuming that the, the less expensive, higher volume transmission. So those are almost half a cent. And then distribution, also three tiers, a little more than half a cent. Stranded cost, one cent, just over one cent. And then the system benefit, 6.7 cents. So all told, that adds up to 11.27 cents. So that's basically the cost of power that you procure, that you purchase from utility on, on a rate G meter. And then the GV meter, so G would be Dr. Crisp, GV would be Penit, would be Fairgrounds and presumably Penachuk. In that case, there isn't a transmission charge for that class, but there is the distribution, the stranded cost, the system benefit. So that adds to 10.77 cents. Or if you run back 18 months, with COVID, we actually had, and we saw this in the last economic recession after the, the financial collapse of 2008, you had an actual reduction in the supply portion as demand dropped system-wide, nationwide, in fact. So we've seen a little bit of a reduction. That's why the, the last 12 months is actually less than the last 18 months. You know, Eversource is expected to get approval from the PUC to increase its rates. They're currently at a rate case and they asked for a 24% increase. I don't think they'll get that much, but they will get an increase so that the numbers are almost certain to head back up. But, but we do use the last 12 to be on the more conservative side, the last 12 months. So that's again what we're plugging in for, assuming it for both schools, since they're on the larger side as middle schools. If one of them happened to be G, then the energy value would be a bit higher. And that, to, to round this out, I hope I'm answering your question, Paula, that is where the PPA rate, that 8.75 cents, that's where it makes financial sense because it's not just competing against the, you know, 8.476 for supply, but also offsetting these other charges. Did that make some sense?
Yeah, it makes sense because I know every six months, Eversource goes for a rate increase like everybody else does. Okay.
Yes.
Yes, they do. I mean, that's just part of life. You know, no matter how you slice and dice it, you're going to pay in one, one way. Pay me now, pay me later. Okay, that answers my question. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And just, I, I mentioned my, our project managers just sent me the link. You had saved them earlier, but if you're interested, this is Fairgrounds, obviously in the, the corner over by the, the track there. My softball team plays in that field. Thank you very much. Some different roof heights, which made it, which made it kind of fun and interesting. This is looking obviously from the back of the panels. That's the panel claw racking system I mentioned, which comes in at 2.5 pounds per square foot with the panels installed. You can see kind of here on one of the lower walls, anytime we have a nice north-facing wall on a roof, we like to hang the inverters, again, doing the conversion from the DC to AC. And you see, one of our guys there is, this is the combiner panel with a bunch of breakers where we can shut off individual inverters. So the power goes into the inverters from all the panels and strings, gets converted to AC and then comes out of the inverters through this panel. And these large conduits are now piping down into your utility room, which is at the back. And that's directly feeding your, your main distribution panel. So that just gives you a little sense of, and you can see some of the expansion happening there. It's been a busy construction site, but kudos to, to the whole team on making a lot of progress. I know it's a strange time for, for our public schools, but we're excited about what this offers for the future, including for my own young kids when they attend Nashua Public Schools. So that just gives you a glimpse of, of the construction, which all the panels are now laid. We're just doing the, the final tie-ins, the final wiring, which was earlier in the process. And look forward to having them turned on in the next matter of weeks. Were there any other questions?
I, I don't have any at this point.
I'm all set.
Okay. I was going to say you had good weather to work in. You didn't have a lot of rain, but must have been real hot up on that roof for the, your employees.
Yeah, they've been, they've had some hot days these last couple of months. But all in all, it's helpful not to have so much rain. They'd rather the heat than the wet.
Okay.
We're, we're proud of the work they're doing. And we thank you very much for the opportunity to, to do these projects for you. We certainly, we're not going anywhere. We'll, we'll be here and obviously I continue to call Nashua home. So, you know, we're committed to, to standing by them for the long haul and ensuring that they, they provide the savings as well as the environmental benefits that we've presented.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so I'm looking for a motion. Do you want me to make the motion, Paula?
I move that we accept the PMS solar proposal.
Okay, I'll second that. Paula, we'll take the vote.
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Oden is yes. So we will forward that to the, the October 26th board meeting, Dan. And I thank you so much for your, your patience and your thorough presentation. It's appreciated.
Thank you very much for your time. Greatly appreciate it. And I will, I'm sure be in touch with Sean and Dan to get my marching orders, but happy to, to come back on the 26th and present or answer questions.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you. Appreciate your service for our city. Have a great night.
Have a good evening, okay?
Bye-bye.
Bye-bye. Okay, Sean, I think you're up next again. Our second item is a Penachuk Middle School roof proposal.
Yes, so as you're, you're aware of the middle school project progressing. And as we've got into the design at Penachuk Middle School, we've found some things that weren't in the original scope of work. And the, the primary things are to replace the roof between the classroom wings. That roof is original to the school, so it's now 30 somewhat years old and in need of replacing. Another item that needs to be replaced are the mechanical systems. The ones in that section of, of the building are also original to the school. And the, then the associated with mechanical systems are the control systems. And so those are the, the wires and the computer programs that make all the mechanical systems work. Between the mechanical and the control systems, it's nearly a million dollars in potential change orders to the project. Our contingency for Penachuk is approximately 1.7 million. So the, the team is a little concerned about putting forward so much money this early in a project where we haven't even finished the design, nor have we put a spade in the ground, except that this past summer, we've done a little pre-utility work. So in discussing this with the Joint Special Chairman, Alman Dowd, one of the funding mechanisms we came up with was to replace the roof using deferred maintenance money. And as you're aware, we received $460,000 that was placed into our deferred maintenance account. We have a lot of projects that are in the queue, but I believe since this is a 30-year roof, that it's pretty much risen to the top of the things we should do. And we received a quote from the construction manager to do this, and it's $192,243.99. The other vital thing about this particular roof is, if you recall the diagrams that Mr. Weeks showed, would you? A lot of the, not a lot, but a good portion amount of the solar panels are actually on that roof that we are talking about replacing. You don't want to put solar panels on an old, old roof. It just doesn't make any sense. Because sooner or later, that roof will, will start to leak. So that, that's my recommendation, is that we pre-fund the roof replacement with deferred maintenance funds. The understanding I have with Alman Dowd is that once we get further along in the project and we have a better sense for where the contingency is, that we will, by the time the invoices come in, we'll actually be paying for them with construction funds. But just to get authorization to proceed with the roof replacement, we need to use deferred maintenance money, if that makes sense to you. Mr. Donovan, if you had anything to add to that?
Yes, I mean, this is a, a different funding mechanism. We're using, by requesting to use the deferred maintenance funds that we just received, that's a guaranteed source of funds, so that's probably how the motion should be approved. But as Sean said, we're hoping that by the time the roof work is actually done and the invoices, we have to begin to start paying the invoices. We're hoping that there will be contingency available in the middle school project, thus freeing up these funds to use for other projects within the district. At this point, I feel pretty comfortable. I think what Sean and I are suggesting is a pretty conservative way of doing this. So we think that within the funds allotted to the middle school project for Penachuk, there should be funds available for this roof when the work is done, which is when, Sean? Next spring?
Earliest it started to be next summer.
Okay.
Potentially it'd be the summer after that, depending on how the, we still have to get through the planning board and schedule's a little bit up in here.
So the, the further away it is, the better chance we have on the other construction that'll be going on, so. That's the hope at least.
Okay, and isn't Penachuk the school where we had a problem with the roof? I don't know, probably 12 years ago, where the roof collapsed because of snow, Sean?
Yes, actually, you're, you're conservative in your dates. It's actually more like 18 years ago. It's right smack in the middle of the high school project. And about the same time, we're doing Stelo Stadium, so there was a lot going on at the time. And about the same time, we're doing Stello Stadium, so there was a lot going on at the time. So I would say 2002, probably, you know, give or take. That was not this part of the roof. That was part of the sloped roof, the shingles on it, which was, if there's ever an earthquake, that's probably the roof to go to because that was built up very structurally sound.
Can I jump in here? Hello?
Sure.
Yeah, okay. I didn't know if anybody could. Mr. Smith, I think that was around 2001, 2000, 2001, because I was on the board a bit at that point, when the roof collapsed. One of these, another catastrophe that I've lived through of being on the board. I don't know, maybe I shouldn't be on the board. Now, it only seems like when I'm on these boards, we have these problems. I don't know. Okay, a couple of questions here. So we want to use deferred maintenance money to do the roof, and hopefully, there'll be enough in contingency to repay us back $192,000 plus. Is that the goal of this whole thing?
A little slightly different. We would be using deferred maintenance funds to write the purchase order, but by the time the invoices come back, we would shift the accounting over to the construction money. Effectively, you're correct. I mean, it's slightly different mechanism.
Okay, I've been through enough of these constructions. You know that, Mr. Smith. I've seen that this height, the North School, the Penachuck collapsed, the South School, I don't know, some other schools probably too. Well, you know, not that I don't trust anybody. I just want to make sure that if we're gonna give up this deferred maintenance money right now, because we don't know if it's gonna come back, we have no guarantee yet, until all the money goes through and all the purchase orders go through, I'd like, I would like it in writing, saying that, you know, we will be getting this money back so we can use it for other maintenance projects. Because I don't want to have it that something comes up and we can't get this, now we've got something else deferred that we can't do. And the way we're going here, we're not back in school yet. So I even questioned, do we even need another middle school with all this work going on? Because we don't know the numbers of the kids that have left the district at this point. That's where my hesitation comes in, you know? Not that I mistrust government at all, but, you know, I've seen projects before and everything that's going on. And I want to make sure that if we put this money out there and if we have to use it by some chance, that we're definitely gonna get this money back so we don't have to give up another project somewhere down the road. Does it make sense?
I would say yes, that makes sense to, but I would, I guess what I would offer is, this is a roof we should be replacing anyway. Again, it's 30, over 30 years old. I think the Penachuck was put into operation '87, '88. And this is the original section of that roof. So it would probably be percolating to the top of our needs anyway. If we didn't get the money back, I still could look myself in the mirror and say, yep, that was money well spent. I do monitor the finances for the construction committee quite closely. Overall, we have about $8 million of contingency. We certainly don't need or want to spend all that money, but I'm pretty comfortable that the project will be able to pay the invoices for this once they start coming in.
And I understand what you're saying. The roof has to be replaced. But if you're redesigning and doing constructions on a school, you would replace the roof anyway, most likely if you're adding on to the school because you would do the roof anyway, because you'd want the whole roof to be coordinated. I'm trying to think of the words. You want the whole, the whole building to have a new roof to begin with because you didn't want to take the chance that the roof didn't connect properly and you're gonna have leaks. So you would do it anyway on a new construction. My concern is, and I understand how much money is in contingency, but you can have overruns. I mean, the cost of lumber, the cost of material now has gone up since this pandemic. So it's costing more to build on something. So I don't want to run into overrun money and then we're not gonna have this money back to do other things that we need to do in the school district. And then we're saying, oh, but $192,000, we need, we put it on the roof, that would have been done no matter what, because you're doing construction now, we don't have that. So that's how I'm looking at this. I don't want to rob from Peter to pay Paul right now. So that's where my concern lies.
So can I ask you, Ms. Johnson, would you like to make a motion that has that contingency in it?
I'll make that motion, and I'll make a motion not to exceed this amount of money also.
Okay.
Because I'm, I'm truly concerned about this. A roof would have to be put on this junior high regardless on a construction. And I just don't want to use this money that's, that's gonna be needed for elsewhere. That's our problem. We rob from Peter, pay Paul, and we never give back to Peter. Paul always takes it, you know?
But my understanding from Mr. Smith was, the roof is what, about 32 years old and was going to be needed, needed to be replaced in the very near future? Did I understand you correctly, Mr. Smith?
Yeah, yes, yes.
Okay.
And I got that, but we're doing a construction that we would have to put a roof on the whole building anyway because you have to do the, you can't just do sections of the roof. You know, you would be doing the whole building anyway. So that's where my concern is. So we're gonna be doing, we're gonna take $192,243.99 and we're gonna be doing this to roof the building. But we're gonna have to put a whole new roof on the building to begin with if you're adding additions to it. You would want to tie the old in with the new. Am I correct here? Am I losing something? Because I mean, I wouldn't roof half a house and then expect the roof to be good. I would do the whole house for the money to make sure it all ties in together. So.
The trouble is, Paula, that the, the project scope did not include replacing this roof. For whatever reason, it was missed, wasn't listed. And when we developed the budget of $120 million, this roof was not included. So now, now we're, for whatever reason that that happened, it might even be partially my fault because I didn't raise my hand and say, what about the roof? We are putting in two additions to the school. You know, educational wings, plus a new music room, plus a media center. Those will, those are all new construction. They will definitely have new roofs. But this particular section of the roof did not get caught in that original scope of work.
Well, I guess my question then becomes, you have a contractor that's doing all this, and they should be coming to us and saying to us, you know, you're gonna need a new roof over here. The roof is old and in order for us to do this project correctly, we need to tie it all in together and put a new roof on. So, I mean, I guess it's not a full project and a full cost estimate if they don't include when they're gonna tie in the roof sections from the old to the new of the building. So I guess my motion is going to be to recommend to replace Penachuck Middle School's roof section in the amount of $192,443.99, not to exceed that amount. And that, that's contingent upon us getting the money from the construction project. Does that sound about right?
I'm still writing.
I had to think about it as I did it.
Okay. You move to recommend to replace the Penachuck Middle School roof section?
In the amount not to exceed?
In the amount not to exceed? Okay.
Contingent upon?
Getting the money?
Right, from the contingency account? Is that correct?
Construction contingency, yes.
Construction contingency.
Account. Okay.
Let me just speak on that again, one more time.
Okay.
I'm concerned that if we're, we're gonna put on this roof now, let's say before, you're saying that we have to do this. So this is gonna have to be either before the construction or during the construction, that this whole thing ties in together. Because I don't want us to patch the roof up now and put a new roof on. Then we do the construction, and now we have a problem that the roofs are not tying in together. We get leaks and we get another collapsed roof. So I'm, so this is basically going to make sure it's done correctly.
Okay. So I'll reread the motion to recommend to replace the Penachuck Middle School roof section in the amount not to exceed $192,243.99, contingent upon getting the money from the construction accountant.
Contingency account, is that it?
Construction contingency account.
Yes.
Okay, can I get a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. We'll take the vote. Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
And Mrs. Oden is yes. It passes. Okay. The next item on the agenda is the Amherst Street lighting contract from EverSource.
Yes, so that's mine too.
I'm glad you came tonight.
So you're aware that we've done a lot of these conversions from old lighting to LED lighting over the past decade. Even in our construction projects such as Sunset Heights, we had all new LED lighting installed. It saves us a significant amount of money. And in the memo I sent, some of the schools we funded through the EverSource Smart Start program include Penachuck Middle School, Bicentennial, Dr. Chris, Main Duswell, and Virchow Elementary Schools. And there's some other ones that we did as well. Smart Start program is a program that EverSource provides initial funding upfront, and then we pay them back over a period of time. This particular project will replace all the lighting to the school on the inside as well as the outside lighting. Part of the package that was sent to you in advance was a sheet that's, they call it, it's still a public service company in New Hampshire, EKA EverSource, it's called Smart Start program. And we have two payment options, payback options. And the way we pay it is out of our monthly utility bill. And the savings that we see in the LED generally in excess of this monthly payment. So we're not paying more money than we currently have in the budget. We always have gone with a shorter payback term. So in this case, it's 87 months. And the reality of the way this has worked is every, not every year, but whenever we have a budget surplus at the end of the year, Mr. Donovan and I get together and look at the balances remaining in all these Smart Start projects. You may recall that this past summer, actually back in June, I think, you approved the payoff of, I think, five schools, Dan. So we just paid off the loan completely, or, yeah, completely, without having to pay the entire amount that we would have otherwise through our utility bill. Was that five schools? Do you recall?
I think it was four, but we have one left. We only have one left in the program.
Right. So it's a, it's a great program, and it saves us money. And it saves us a lot of money once we pay off the loan. And just highly recommend that we proceed with the Smart Start program at Amherst Street Elementary School using the lower, the payback periods of 87 months.
And, and I, I agree with Mr. Smith on this. Like he said, we've used this at a number of other schools. We choose the lower of the payback. I think there's only been maybe one school where we ended up going through the whole 87 months in this, using this example. You know, we may pay it off for a couple of years, and then if there's some excess funds at the end. And, and the good thing is, it's obvious how, how significant savings you get from the LED lights. And so the shorter, the sooner we can pay it off, then the sooner we can enjoy the, the benefits of the savings. So it's, it's a plan that's worked well, and I, I think we should do it in this school also.
Okay, do you have any questions, Ms. Johnson?
No, I'm good.
Okay. So.
Do you need a motion?
I think she does. She's muted right now.
I know. Okay, I'll make a motion that we approve the recommendation, to approve the, recommendation to approve EverSource Smart Start proposal for Amherst Street. School.
EverSource proposal for Amherst Street. Okay. Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
And Mrs. Oden is yes. The motion is approved unanimously. Okay, the next item on the agenda, we knew this was gonna be a long one last night, didn't we, Dan?
Yes, we did.
Remote learning web cameras.
Okay. Greg Rodriguez went out and got some quotes based upon requests from various people within the district to take a look at pricing for webcams to help our teachers, especially during this remote time period. If you recall, I believe the board meeting prior to last evening's board meeting, there was included in the package a cost. It was just a sheet of paper. I believe it was the Aukers. If you look at this, at this memo, the Aukers, the cost of $165. That was simply included without anything else. So we suggested he go out and get quotes from multiple companies. So he chose two of the local company's connection, which I believe is in the Nash, Nashor or Merrimack, right on the line there, and then IT Insiders, which is a, a company in Nashor and Main Street. So as you can see, he got significantly lower pricing. It is a different camera. But according to Mr. Rodriguez, the, the lower-priced cameras are just as good for what we want to use them for. So his, his suggestion is that we would buy 1,000 of these cameras. Now, the interesting thing, it says here at the bottom, to go with the Odessa Cybertrack H5 at $54.71. Though when I look at the IT Insider, it looks like the same camera at $54. So I'm not sure why you want to pay 71 cents more, but if it's the same camera, unless, because the, yeah, it looks like the exact same camera based on what's, what's in the memo. So I guess that's the one confusing part. But assuming this is approved, we would request to use the CARES Act funding. We'll have more information on the CARES Act funding later in the meeting. But there's certainly funds available within the CARES Act for something like this. Even though you have to get funds approved in the grant before you spend them, this is the kind of thing that should not be a problem in the CARES Act because remote learning is one of the main reasons, the main funding mechanisms within the CARES Act grant. So we could pretty much count on it. We would have to go through the process, but we could pretty much count upon these funds coming from the, from the CARES Act grant.
Ms. Johnson, do you have any questions?
Yeah, I have a question.
Okay.
Okay, so this is gonna be, even with the CARES Act, this isn't any little bit of money to sneeze at. So let's say we get the kids back to school, everything is fine, and we don't have any shutdowns and COVID. shutdowns, and COVID disappears, I don't know, relaxes. So if the kids were all back in school, what are we going to do with all these cams after? What do we do with them?
Honestly, I don't know. Probably a question I would have to ask the IT department.
Yeah, I'd like to know, I mean, I get it, you know, this is CARES Act money, this is still taxpayers' dollars that's come through, there's just so much money we can print out there. But I mean, I'd like to know what are we going to do with all this? I mean, are we planning that in the bad winter months, we're going to shut down the schools maybe, or when kids are very sick with the regular flu or stomach bug that we shut down and we'd be able to remote like this? I'd like to kind of get an idea as to what, what we're going to do with all this equipment. You know, we're planning trying to get the kids back into school, hybrid or full time. So I, I have a little bit of concern with all this.
I, I have a question, how many, how many classroom teachers do we have? Do we have 1,000?
It's about 1,000, Daddy.
1,000, okay. Okay, thank you. Well, certainly this price is much better, I think, I think the last one, it was through a, a second party, there was a middleman, I think it was $169 or $189 a camera?
Yeah, it was $165.
Okay.
Was, was the other price.
Yeah.
So, you know, the possibility is, I guess they could be used for other things, I, but I'm probably not the person to respond to that question. So I guess possibly if you choose to make a motion, there could be a qualifier in there and we could have that answer. Or I, I guess I'm not 100% sure how much of a... This, if, if we have to make a motion on this tonight or not. You know, maybe it could wait till next month, I don't know.
Daddy?
Yes, Paula, go ahead.
Oh, Tara.
The one thing I do know that these cameras are universal in use is 90% of us have desktops on our, on our desks as opposed to laptops. And this basic, these cameras basically just hang on the top of our monitors and they turn our desktops into laptops. Zoom is something that even though we use it because of the pandemic, I don't think Zoom's going to go away for us. I think that meetings where, will continue to happen, where we might have a group of people together, but we zoom in a, a person or two, and I think this would allow our teachers to have access to meetings without traveling from building to building. I know at times even for our administrators, instead of pulling them out of the buildings where they belong and they're safer, or it's better for them to be there, that we could use that. So I'm not saying that all of our teachers would use it for that, but it does retrofit our computers into having the same ability as a laptop for less of a cost, so.
Okay, that makes a lot of sense, thank you. God, there was a telephone thing, meeting.com or something, I never figured out why people didn't use it more, why they would meet at central office because it would have saved a lot of time, so that makes sense, thank you for your input on that, Tara.
You're welcome.
So Paula, do you want to wait and get a little bit more information, but from what Ms. Cancela just told, it looks like it could be very useful. I know sometimes departments get together, teachers on professional development days often get together grade levels throughout the, the district and they might be able to use that for professional development where people don't have to travel to a school, they can just log into the, the professional development with their camera. Paula, what do you think?
Well, I'll make a motion and I'd like to get more information on this before the next full board meeting, which gives plenty of time because that's when we would vote on this, the end of the month, right?
Correct.
Okay, so I'll make a motion that we accept the IT equipment purchases, webcams, from IT Insiders, is that where we're going with Mr. Donovan, IT Insiders?
Yes.
Okay, in the amount of $54 per webcam, not to exceed, I think I came up with $54,000? $4,000?
Yes.
Not to exceed, exceed $54,000 for 1,000 webcams, pending additional information from Mr. Rodriguez on what we, we do with these cameras once we are finished with remote learning.
Okay, I accept the insiders, can you, insiders quote?
Yes, put it that way.
Quote, in the amount of $54,000 for?
1,000 cameras.
1,000?
Not to exceed $54,000 for 1,000 cameras, webcams, cameras.
Not to exceed, okay, I don't have that.
For the webcams, that's what they are.
Amount not to exceed, not to exceed, Tara, are you getting this also?
She is now.
Oh, God, I accept IT Insider's quote in the amount not to exceed $54,000 for 1,000 cameras, pending additional information?
From Mr. Rodriguez as to what would we do with these cameras if we're not remoting anymore?
Mr. Rodriguez. As to their use?
Yeah. It's better.
We are not in remote learning. Okay, I took shorthand in high school, but I don't remember it.
I never did, so I don't have to remember it.
Okay, so the motion is to accept the IT Insider's quote in the amount not to accept, not to?
Exceed.
Exceed $54,000 for 1,000 cameras, pending additional information from Mr. Rodriguez as to their use when we are not in remote learning.
Perfect.
Okay. Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
And Mrs. Oden is yes, unanimous, unanimous, and hopefully Greg can be at the, the meeting and Tara can tell him some of the uses they, they're used for, okay? Okay, now we are at Franklin Street Purchase.
Yes, okay, so Franklin Street Purchase, this has been something we have been considering for some time now. We, over the past few years, we've had a, a need for preschool space, our preschool numbers have been rising consistently each year. Marcia Bagley's here to speak more to that if necessary. And so our, with the steady increase in that, they have been taking up all the extra spaces or extra classrooms in the elementary schools. As of the end of last school year, there were no extra classrooms. We received some funds from the National Education Foundation to, they're going to supply a, a science inventory of materials and we really had a very difficult time finding a space just to set up some shelves and, and, and put these materials. So the number of spaces available with, within our schools, especially our elementary schools, has been very limited lately. And I think, and, and part of that is we have more students that have OTPT needs, they simply need more space to provide those services. At New Searl School, for example, they were using, they constructed something near the stage and they were doing the work there, and then as it turned out, we had to move it when the fire department came in and reviewed, so we started really getting to the point where we didn't have lots of space. So we started thinking, would consolidation of the preschools make sense? If we could get them all in one place, then the possibility would be, not only would we have all those students together, all the teachers and specialty providers at the same place, it, it would make a much better use of staff. So we began to, to look at buildings. Now, keep in mind, over the last six years, Sean and I have spent a lot of time looking at buildings because of the Brentwood program, when we decided to move it from Merrimack back to Nashua. It's very, very difficult to find a building that can fit a school site. There are some facilities that you might be able to do it and the landlord would rather not have students there. The other thing with, with, it's hard to get spaces that would sort of turn into classrooms without putting in significant renovation costs. And there are, there are landlords willing to do that, but then they're going to spread the cost of those renovations into your rent and spread your rent out for a longer period of time. So when we were looking at Brentwood, we, we found a very limited supply of, of places that we could actually put the program in. So we currently have, Brentwood has its lease ends in June of 2021. You combine that with the need to get more classrooms for the preschools, because the numbers do continue to rise. So we started looking at places and we ran into 55 Franklin Street. So 55 Franklin Street is the former Nashua Christian Academy, that school shut down a couple of years ago. So it's, it's an old R and D building, so it's got, what, it, it's sort of broken out somewhat like a school. So we looked at that and said, you know, this is a real possibility, the church that ran Nashville Christian Grace Fellowship, they, you know, they had it suited up as a school, so even though it's not quite in perfect condition, it's sort of the condition we would like, it's in a lot better shape than most of the other places we've looked at. So with, with A, the need for the preschool space and B, the need to do something about Brentwood, and I think the other thing with Brentwood is we'd like to increase the size of Brentwood, currently we have about 18 students there. As, as you've heard me talk many, many times, out of district tuition just keeps going up and up and up. One of the programs down in Massachusetts in Chelmsford now charges $92,000 a year for a day student. So the more that we can keep these students in the district, the better, better off we can be. And to do that for these special programs, you do need more space than typical classroom frequently allows. So along with that is what I call sort of a, a unique funding opportunity. We have $430,000 from a grant that we can use to pur, towards purchasing this facility. We have this one-time chance to use these funds, if we don't use these funds, they revert back to the state and they'll turn around and give them to other districts. It's already been approved within the grant to use it for this, for this purpose. And we also have, in the one-time funds that the state granted us, as Sean talked about the $460,000 for deferred maintenance, we also have money set aside to, to improve the Franklin Street facility. So the other thing is if we move ahead and do this, it's a good time for plant operations and that this building wouldn't open up to students until September of 2021. That would allow us plenty of time to do the types of things we need to do. It, it would also, we'd be able to use more in-house labor, therefore we'd be able to do it cheaper and not have to hire a lot of contractors. So after we looked at all the buildings, the other building, just, I think I mentioned in the memo, we did look at Infant Jesus, which was a school, obviously, that was in great shape, that would have been a great option for us, except there were a couple of things with bathroom facilities, no elevator, and they ended up renting it out to another, to a nonprofit anyway, they were not interested in selling it because it's part of the church property. So even the, the church said pretty much to us, no, we're not interested in, in leasing. We want to get out of the lease, we want to own our facilities, I think in the long term, that certainly makes sense. So I met with the church and their realtor, negotiated what is called an installment purchase plan. The way this will work is we will take ownership of it immediately, but we will pay for it over a four-year period. The first year, when we sign the agreement, we will pay $600,000, of which 430,000 of that will come from the grant. And the remainder of that, 170,000 savings, most all of that will be coming from the savings on the buses for the first month of this year, because we're not going to be paying the full rate on the buses for the first month of this year. So those are funds that are, are already available to us. And neither one of those amounts can you count on in future years, they're going to be available to us this year, they're not going to be available going forward, assuming we go back to normal school.
I'm sorry, I thought you had said the 170,000 was from the state.
No, what?
No? 430,000.
400.
Was a grant, and then he said, I thought he said the 170,000 was from the state.
No, 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 sorry, that was, that was from the savings on the, on the bus contract, we will not be paying, the month of September, we really didn't use the buses, so we'll save at least $170,000 on the bus contract for September of this year. But in, in a typical school year, we're going to use the buses so there wouldn't be that kind of savings. So those, those funds are available in this, excuse me, in this school year, where next school year, they probably won't be, assuming we're back regular school.
Okay, thank you, thank you for clarifying.
Excuse me. And then in year two and year three, I kept the payments lower, payments of 250,000, 175,000 of that would be what we would have paid to the landlord for the Brentwood space, assuming we decided to stay in that space. So basically, there'd be a difference, we'd have to come up with 75,000 in the operating budget in those two years. And I think that with the $115 million operating budget, we, we could probably find that. And then the final payment of 725,000, there would be the same, the same savings from Brentwood, and then what we would hope is that the middle school project would be pretty much done at that point. And as Mr. Smith had stated, we have, is it about five to six million in contingency on that project, Sean, or is it eight million?
Eight billion.
Okay, so we're hoping that we could repurpose some of those funds, because the project will be pretty much done by then, and we could repurpose those funds to make the final payment. If for some reason those aren't available, we would have to come up with the If for some reason those aren't available, we would have to come up with a funding source in year four, whether that would be a bond request or, or some other sort of vehicle. Um, so that's, that's sort of the little tricky part that isn't sort of, uh, a perfect fit. But I think, you know, with the middle school project, the advantage of the new school, um, as Miss, as we talked about, Penachuk, when you're renovating an existing school, that's when you run into surprises. When you're building a brand new school where there's nothing there, the chances of surprises are a lot less, cause you're building everything up from the ground. So you're not going to suddenly find a problem in a wall, cause there is no wall. You're not gonna have a roof problem, cause there is no roof. So we feel that when we're working on that, um, that, um, the final, the final new middle school building, there will be, um, funds available at the end of it. So that is, that is the proposal, um, to also let you know that the purchase and sales agreement that attached, that was, uh, prepared by Celia Leonard, who's one of the legal, uh, the lawyers for the city. Um, and we have obviously spoken with the church and their attorney and their, uh, real estate agent. Um, and we have also reviewed the building. Sean has gone in and looked at it with his guys, uh. And we also, I'll turn it over to Sean right now to talk about, we had architect go in and review the buildings. So Sean, you wanna speak about that a bit?
Sure. We haven't got the, uh, final report or even a draft report, but I did ask them to, to summarize their findings in a, in a memo, which, uh, we just got and be happy to share it with you, uh, after the meeting. Uh, but basically they said the suitable for use as educational facility, the very first comment was building is structurally sound and accommodate the proposed purposes with some alterations. Um, I feel the, the building is pretty much in move-in condition. We'd have to clean it. Um, and populate it with the furniture. Um, the, the some few systems we'd have to install would be probably update the fire alarm system, uh, put in a public address system and some security systems. Um, and those are all in the grand scheme of things relatively inexpensive. And, uh, as Mr. Donovan said, we had some money from the, what, what'd you call them, um?
The one-time funds.
The one-time funds that came in to that, that sounds like it's more than enough to handle what we need to move in.
And Marsha, can you just speak in your, sort of the preschool crew, what, what their thoughts have been?
Sure. So, um, if by consolidating the preschool classrooms, we currently have, um, sixteen preschool classrooms. And by consolidating them into one space, we're able to save, um, on transportation and personnel as well as the other cost savings that, um, Mr. Donovan and Mr. Smith were just speaking about. Um, also it'll free up space within our, some of our elementary schools to provide more specialized program for our, programs for our elementary age students. Um, specifically around behavior, um, currently, as I'm sure, um, Mrs. Oden can, can, uh, speak to in some of our elementary schools, when students are having a really hard time, there's no place for them to go. Um, and so if we had space set aside specifically for students to have, um, access to a calming area, that would help significantly with some of our behavioral issues that we're seeing within the classrooms.
Uh, I, I just have to say, I think it's a smart move, uh, having, having all your staff in one building, being able to service the kids, they're not going out and about. Um, to me, I, I, it just, it just makes a lot of sense. Can I ask, if Brentwood is going to share the building, how is that going to work? What? Structurally or physically, what? How, how does that happen?
Uh, so the, the building is actually three levels, um, so they could be separated by, by levels. Um, or there's, um, I believe we've talked about even having them on one side of the building, uh, because if I'm remembering correctly, there are two large staircases on either end of the building, so the levels are all accessible via stairs. Um, none of our students currently at Brentwood require elevator access to move about the building. Some of our preschoolers do, so. Um, we have, we have considered, you know, if they're sharing that same space, the, the logistical pieces of it. Um, so it is, it is possible.
Yeah, and we, just to speak to that too, this building has an elevator, which is important for some of our preschool students, and it has bathrooms on every floor. Um, which is another thing that a lot of the buildings that we visited simply don't have, and adding those sorts of things get very expensive. But I think the plan initially was to put the Brentwood students on the top floor. Um, and it's really, it's, it's, it's four floors. If you count the basement, the basement is, is usable, very usable space. The school used it, um, as a gathering space. We probably wouldn't use it in year one for, um, for students, but part of it you could certainly use for students.
And, and could you use it for storage? And don't we have problems with storage, uh, in the district?
Yeah, I, you could. We, we, we do have uh, storage, uh, things, actually the special ed records over at the high school are, we're running into a lot of problems right now with those.
Okay. Um, let me ask what, what the parking is like there. Is it the long building that goes along Franklin Street?
It's the building, um, if you get down Franklin Street, you know, the new, there, there's Sean showing it.
Oh, okay.
It's on the right-hand side, just as you make the turn to go. So if you get down Franklin, it's, uh, on the left is the new lots, uh, building there, the, with, with the new apartments. And then it's sort of diagonally across, across from those apartments, there's, there's, uh, four separate parking areas. Um, and then this building is there and then the, the road turns up. I don't know if it ceases to become Franklin Street at that point and becomes another street, but it's the road that then goes up the hill, uh, where you go to sort of the Florida streets. Um, but the, um, the parking, we wouldn't purchase the parking lot, but we would have an easement for use of two of the lots. So there is some parking right behind the building, uh, probably about ten spaces. And then there are four of these lots. The one closest to the school is actually used by the building across the street from them, so that one isn't available. But the next two are, um, and we could use those as long as we did not use them, uh, during the weekends. Cause the church obviously needs the parking spaces on the weekends. But even if someone needed to go in during the weekend, they could use one of the ten spots near the building. So that they wouldn't sell us the lots, they would just give us an easement to use the lots Monday through Friday.
And, and we wouldn't have a, a problem with buses, uh, bringing the students in? They'd have a safe place to unload?
Yep, the, uh, the front of the building, the actual front of the building, the way it is now, they actually have some bulletproof glass in there. If you use the front entrance, uh, the church put that in. So yeah, the, the bus would come up and it would drop them off right at the sidewalk there, right in front of the building.
And can I just also add, across the street is the, um, is a clinic for students, for children with autism. It's privately run. And they have had buses drop off there before.
Okay. I, I'm looking at that picture and I have no idea where that is. It's like from another city. Um, I'll have to, I'll have to go down and, and look.
Um, yeah, just go to Triangle Credit Union and then just keep going. It's down on the right. Look, Sean's even giving us the big picture. Look at that.
It's like Bana White.
I, I, I thought there was a restaurant.
Frank, Frank, that's, uh, the facility right here. These are the, the, uh, parking spaces that Dan talked about. And you have a church and you have Triangle Credit Union, you need to go towards Main Street.
You're referring to Bonhoeffer's, aren't you, Dottie? Is that where it is down there?
Yes.
Okay. Well, uh,
And Tara loves Bonhoeffer's.
I, I just have to say, I think this is a very, very wise investment for, for us. And it would, I think it's a real plus to have all the preschools together and to have, uh, a facility for Brentwood, because this, the facility they're in has worked very well. It's been, uh, a great move from, uh, Merrimack, where they had that building that needed a lot of repairs. Uh, but I think we'll, we'll save money in the long run, once, once this is paid for. And I just think, uh, staffing-wise, to have your staff serving so many students in one building, I think that saves, uh, an awful lot of, um, could save staff, the number of staff that you need rather than people traveling between buildings, so. I, 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 I thank you all for looking at this, because I think this is important and from, if I remember correctly, uh, First Church had somebody else that wanted to go in this year when we were looking at it, uh, before we signed the contract. Do you remember that? Mr. Donovan, I think somebody else was looking at it and like anything else, the, the price goes up on, on rentals. Uh, there's not a lot of space in Nashua, so to me, this makes a lot of sense. Ms. Johnson, do you have anything?
Yeah, I have a few questions again, a few questions. So, um, let's go back to that eight million dollars in contingency for the middle school project. Okay, is this the same eight million dollars I was talking about over on the roof of Penachuk Middle School?
Yes.
Okay, so you see how those eight million dollars kind of gets moved around from this point to that point? Um, so if in fact we can't make the last payment of seven hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, that's four years from now, then we're gonna look into the contingency of the eight million dollars. Is that correct?
For a portion of it, for a portion of it. I mean, you, you've got to understand, we will have the savings from the, uh, the Brentwoods, so a hundred and seventy-five of that we would save. Um, we would have basically in the operating budget.
Okay.
So let's say, you know, it'd be five fifty or so.
So we'd have to come up with five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Okay, that eight million dollars, I'm gonna go very quickly here. Um, so on the preschool, there's sixteen preschool classes right now. Am I correct?
Correct.
And by combining them into the Franklin Street School, we'll still have the sixteen classes or will we have less than sixteen classes, because you said there could be a savings on transportation and on personnel? So what personnel would we be saving?
Uh, it wouldn't be teachers, but it would be, um, speech pathologists, school psychologists, OTs and PTs.
And psychology.
And, uh, to, just to clarify, these are only our special education preschool classrooms. These don't include, um, the Title I preschool classrooms. I don't oversee that program. Um, so these, the sixteen is just our special education programs.
Okay, so this is special ed. Would we be taking, Mr. Donovan, the Title I students and be bringing them over here too, as for savings?
Uh, that's, that's very possible, yes. Uh, that's another savings of about fifty thousand dollars. Um, if you, it's probably why you brought that up, Mrs. Johnson, that, um, we're, we're paying fifty thousand to the church for four classrooms. Um, which in my opinion is a little bit expensive, but it's where we've been for, forever. Um, and the good thing about this, if you think about location, this is just down the hill from that, so. It, it's, it's kind of a good place, so that would be another fifty thousand savings a year that I didn't necessarily put in, because we probably wouldn't do that year one. But we, we certainly would, that, that would be considered, yes.
I know that the Title I program's excellent, because we live in a lead street school district and my daughter was able to go to that program and I, I'll tell you, I thought it was an excellent program. I and her preschool teacher, the Title I preschool teacher, as of, I think, last year, when I got on the board, I saw her. So it was so nice to see her, to remember me even. Um, but excellent program. Now, the Brentwood School, which are probably the top, so there's four floors, the basement, first floor, second floor and third floor. So Brentwood would be on the third floor.
Correct.
The preschool will be on the first floor.
And
And who goes in the middle floor, floor number two?
The preschool would as well.
They would be there as well?
Mm-hmm.
So the preschool basically is gonna be taking up three quarters of the building.
Yes, because even though they're small bodies, they take up a lot of space. Um, a lot of our students require specialized equipment. Um, so we would need places for those, our students who require OT and PT. OT and PT need separate locations, separate spaces within the building to provide those services. Same with speech therapy. Some students receive their speech therapy within the classroom, but many receive it outside of the classroom. So not only are there preschool students and their teachers and staff coming over with them, but there would be the need for office spaces or, or therapy rooms as well.
So, Mr. Donovan, for the Brentwood School kids, there'd be more than enough room for them on the third floor for all their activities, cause I went to the school up on Amherst Street after I got sworn in. And, um, I know the one in, um, Merrimack was kind of like a small contained school, kind of like little pieces put together like a marginal school. Um, but one floor would be enough for, uh, lunch, um, room changes and doing everything like they have right now?
Yes, like based on, uh, the square footage, it's, um, I think this space is actually a little bit better space, the way it's broken out. But it's, you know, it's ten, it's ten thousand square feet up there.
Okay, ten thousand square feet up there?
Yes.
Okay, I see Mr. Smith has got his picture up, so we could see what's going on here. Okay.
And, and keep in mind, we can take, because Brentwood has some smaller class sizes, some of those rooms can be, can be separated. So you could fit maybe history class in one and, and a math class in, in another, it'd be within the same current room size and you could just put up some sort of a, a wall or divider.
And for the Brentwood kids, what age group is it? Do they start at?
Currently it's high school, so grades nine through twelve.
Okay, so it's high school. High school. So if we were to buy this building, that means that we would, any kids that would be able to be placed in this program that's an out-of-district, we would probably move them back into the district to be in this program somewhat, because we'd have more room, or no?
Well, so the Brentwood program is our program that we run, that other districts can send us students as an out-of-district option. Um, and currently we don't have any students from out-of-district. Uh, we have, I'm sorry, I take that back. We do, we have students who are residing at, uh, Nashua Children's Home, who attend Brentwood program.
Okay, so they attended also?
Yes, and so those districts pay the tuition to our program. Um, there are some students that we have had to send out of district. Um, we typically, um, try obviously to meet their needs within the programs that we have available. Uh, I can't say that we would bring all of our students back, but we would, I think we would have a better option of providing the services that those students need if we had the space to allow for them to receive those services.
Okay, well that's, you know, if we're gonna be getting a building like this, hopefully we can accommodate the students with their needs, to bring them back into the district, it would save us money and be able to have a closer contact and be able to um, make sure that the IEPs are being followed more, uh, strictly and, uh, we have more, um, view of everything, control of it, I guess, control, I hate the word control, but more control of it.
Oversight.
Okay. So I think we're pretty good on this. I, that, I think that's the end of my questions. Did you want me to make a motion, Ms.?
Well, I had, I have, uh, just a couple. It's an old building, uh, any estimates as to what the heating would be for a multi-floor building from that age?
I haven't really addressed that yet. Um, it was built in the sixties. It's a, basically, uh, a cube, which those buildings tend to be efficient. Um, and it's about forty thousand square feet. So Dr. Crisp is in the neighborhood of fifty-five thousand square feet. So we could probably start with Dr. Crisp's number, and I don't have the utility costs in front of me for, I'll try to extrapolate what that might be for the school.
Okay, I, I was just wondering. And is there a cafeteria in there?
There, there isn't, there's not. The basement is pretty wide open. And in my, my bag of pictures here, I don't know if it really shows it or not, but this is in the basement, and a very good-sized assembly area. Off to the right of this is another wide open space that we thought if we have to set up a cafeteria and maybe even a small kitchenette sort of thing, like Brentwood currently has, then that would potentially be the place to do it. Although if we want to keep the Brentwood kids on the third floor, I'm sure we can find space up there as well.
Well, sorry, can I, we can't, the students will be able to share spaces. Because our preschools, preschoolers attend just two and a half hours typically in the mornings, and then two and a half hours in the afternoon, so there will be a break in time when the preschoolers are not, most of the preschoolers are not present in the building. So there will be times that, that students, I mean, we, we hope that they will be able to, to move about the building.
So the preschoolers aren't there for lunch, they maybe have a snack during that two and a half period, so they wouldn't need?
That's, that's correct. Some of our students who do attend full day may receive the, the lunch, but typically those lunches are brought to the classroom to be eaten in the classroom. They don't participate, they don't go to the cafeteria.
Okay.
In the schools that they're in now.
Okay, well, thank you. That's it from, from my questions. I, I would love to go in it, so Sean, if your team is down there looking at it, how much, how much renovation are they thinking it needs? What, 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 you know, do you have to put in walls, are you looking at that carpet? What do they have for flooring, lights, things like that?
Yeah, so there, there's a wide variety of things we could address. It needs a thorough cleaning, may very well need a good paint job. I would replace a lot of the ceiling tiles. It's a mixture of flooring, there's a VCT, there's ACT, which is asbestos containing, and then there's carpeting. Carpeting I, I've seen there definitely needs to be replaced. The asbestos-containing floor tiles actually in, in pretty good shape. And typically, we don't worry about that, but until or unless it became friable. But we could just clean that up and, and still function with it. You know, over time, we probably want to get rid of it, but it wouldn't be immediate. And those are probably the main things, but then there are some other life safety, like the PA system, intercom system, and upgrading the fire alarm system that we'd have to do. There, there is an existing playground already on the site. I don't know if it's, uh, it looks like it's for preschool or kindergarten, so it's relatively small. Did I give you a good sense for it, or do you need more information?
I guess I, I'd just like to know what's underneath the, the rug. Have you looked, is it more of the asbestos-containing tile, or is it wood or plywood?
I doubt it would be just plain wood. I, I don't know, we, we didn't pull up the carpet to look.
Okay. Well, I, I, I think the size of it, the age, it's not as old. I was thinking it was one of those large brick buildings by the, by the credit union, I don't know what the name of the credit union is, but.
This Triangle Credit Union.
Maybe, yeah, but this building, the buildings I'm thinking of were built before nineteen sixty, so. It's a lot newer than I thought, so, well, thank you.
Yeah, it was the Nashua Corp's, it was their R and D building.
Oh, okay.
So it was never sort of an old mill or anything like that.
Okay, okay. Well, I, as I said, I would love to, when, if your team is going down, Sean, I would love to go down and see what we're, what we're buying there. It sounds like when you look at Nashua, there's not a lot available and everything's expensive, so it sounds like something that for us is the right move.
I could make arrangements for that, do you think you'd want to look at it before the Board of Ed meeting? Or, or what was your timeframe?
No, I, I'm, I, I don't have to look at it before the meeting. I, I, I trust you people, you have gone to look at it. I just, I guess, would just like to see what we're, we're going to have for our kids. I think you people have done the research, you've looked at enough buildings, there's not a lot available, and this sounds like something that will serve the district and our students well. But I would like to just take a tour of it. After going through all the Brentwood places, when we were looking for Brentwood, I, I thought it was fascinating looking to see what's, what's there for us. Thank you. Paula, if you want to make a mo-
Yeah, I also have a couple of follow-up questions, and then I'll make the motion. I want to go back on, to the asbestos flooring. Now, there's no broken tiles or anything on that, what kind of flooring does it look like basically? Is it the old type of tiles?
Yeah, yes, it is, it's basically nine by nine tiles, they're intact, they're not breaking, breaking up. If we did encounter anything like that, we would certainly remove it.
Okay, so if you remove it, do you have to do it with like the hazmat? You know, tape everything up because it's asbestos to remove it?
It depends on how much we actually remove, you know, if I'm just replacing a single tile or a couple tiles, and we do not have to do that. I have a, one of our tradesmen has gone to hazmat school and, and learned how to remove small quantities of asbestos. So the day, day-to-day repairs and that sort of thing, we can handle. If you wanted to replace an entire classroom, then yes, you'd have to do the suits and everything else.
Okay, and there's no tiles lying around if you had to break, if you had to replace any tiles? At that point, you probably have to rip them up, because you wouldn't have any spare tiles.
Right, I, I'd have to size, whatever we pulled up, I'd have to size and replace it with a, another type of tile.
Okay, and.
Alternatively, we could just cover it, right? You could just put a carpet on top of the asbestos tile, and then we don't have to worry about additional damage.
Right, and I'm kind of curious, like Ms. Oden said, like what's underneath the carpeting? Usually people pick it up just to see what's underneath there, to make sure. I'd like to see the building, so when you have a time with Ms. Oden, hopefully I won't be working that day, I'd like to go over and take a look at it and go walk through. Hopefully, so there's, so I guess my other question I'm going to ask on this, I don't know if Ms. Oden asked, but I didn't hear it. There's no mold in the building, no mildew in the building?
Not that I could see, it didn't, didn't come across at all. The architect we hired to spend an entire day nosing around, and they didn't bring it up either.
Okay, so, so there's nothing visible in the basement, no dampness, no wetness in the basement? And in the roof area, there's nothing black?
Yeah, the roof was replaced about eight, eight to ten years ago.
So it still has some life on it? And it's a flat roof, right?
Yes.
Okay, so there's still some life on, on the roof, that's an expensive thing that we just talked about, coincidental. Okay, because that's, that could be, because I remember when the city bought that building down on, what, All Street? And it was a nightmare for public work, mold, yep, yep, nightmare. Okay, I will make a motion regarding the purchase of fifty-five Franklin Street in the amount not to exceed, I like that word, those words, not to exceed, I was at one million eight hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars?
Correct.
Okay.
I mean, I'm, I'm just, I don't want to, it may be a way to say the motion is to approve the purchase and sale agreement with Grace Fellowship Church, and then that has all the information in it.
Perfect, we'll go with that, thank you.
And in the meantime, Dottie and Paula, I took probably a dozen pictures of the facility last time I was there. I can send those to you in the next couple of days.
Uh, thank you.
Okay.
Can you repeat that motion? I didn't get that down. Move to approve?
The purchase and sale agreement between the Nashua School District and the Grace Fellowship Church for the purchase of fifty-five Franklin Street.
For the purchase of Franklin Street. Move to approve purchase-sales agreement between the Nashua School District and the Grace Fellowship Church?
Yes.
Nashua School District, Grace Fellowship Church. Okay, so let me read it back, a move to approve the purchase and sales agreement between the Nashua School District and the Grace Fellowship Church for the purchase of fifty-five Franklin Street. Do we need a number in there?
Yeah, if you, well, I mean, it says it in there, but if you want to put it in the motion, one million eight twenty-five.
One million eight twenty-five, okay. Paula, would you like me to read the motion, you can second it?
Sure.
Okay, move to approve the purchase and sales agreement between the Nashua School District and the Grace Fellowship Church for the purchase of fifty-five Franklin Street for a price of one million eight hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars?
I'll second.
Okay, Paula?
Yes.
And Mrs. Oden is yes, okay. Just looking at this, can I just point out something on the real estate purchase and sales agreement? I'm trying to look, it's the second page. It, it has the installments, two, three, and four. If you look at installment four, it's under the year 2021, I think that should read 2023?
You're correct. I think that got fixed on the latest version, but I will make sure that it did, yes.
Okay. Okay. Next item on the agenda.
Adaptive. Okay, thank you, Marsha, and I.
Marsha, thank you, I'm sorry you had to wait too long, we should have moved that up.
It's okay, thank you very much.
No, you got a lot of stuff.
Marsha likes hanging out with me, it was fine.
I bet.
I think this is televised, so I'm not going to say a word.
Thank you, Marsha.
Thank you, Marsha. Sean, do you leave now too, or are you still here?
If Dan says I can go, I can leave.
You can leave, Sean, thank you.
Thank you, Sean.
Thank you so, so much, Sean.
Good night.
Night, thank you. Tara, I wish you could leave too, but we can't afford to let you go. Okay, the next item is the adaptive budget software.
Okay, um, so as you know, one of the most important jobs that I, I'm involved with annually is preparation and then tracking of the budget. It's obviously a big thing for the school district as well as the city. It's the year 2020, and we're using spreadsheets and PDF files, and it's very clunky, old-fashioned, very time-consuming. So for the past couple of years, the financial people at the city, John Griffin and Rose Evans, and myself, and lately Derek Danielson, have been looking at different solutions to come up with something that would be a real system. And so we've looked at a number of different systems, could not find anything that really met our needs. Until recently, in the last six months or so, we came upon Workday Adaptive Planning. Now, Workday is a pretty big software company these days. If, if you follow golf like I do, you can see it on Phil Mickelson's shirt when he plays. So it's, 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 it's a large company. Now, when we first put in Lawson about nine or ten years ago, there was a budget module. That budget module never was implemented for a number of different reasons. So the actual, when, when you look at the budgets that we give you, the big thick reports that list all the staff and list all the accounts, that's actually done in an access database. That access database, Mark Conrad, when he was the business manager, had someone build it for him. So that shows you how old it was, how old it is. We're lucky we have one programmer left in the district that can figure out how to fix it. But we have a lot of, that's another, another point of contention as we're building the budget each year. So we've, like I said, we've gone out working with the city, we've looked at different softwares, and we sort of have come to the conclusion that we'd like to try this Workday Adaptive Planning. The funding for this will come from, the city is already, John Griffin, the CFO for the city, has already had two hundred thousand dollars that has been put aside for this. A hundred of it came from the city's excess reserves, and the other hundred came from late reserves that showed up when we canceled purchase orders this past summer on the school district. So that's a hundred thousand from each of the operating budgets of the past school year that just ended, fiscal year that just ended. So, and the Board of Alderman has approved these escrows. So the money is available, it's still, the interesting thing with this, this software is, since it's going to be shared by the city and the school, we're requesting approval from the school board, and then we're also going to request from the Board of Alderman. One of the advantages of this also is that there's a, a national purchasing cooperative, the NCPA, that the city has been involved with for years. And there's a twenty percent discount off the price. So the cost for year one for this, it's made up of two components, but the total cost is a hundred and fifty-four thousand nine twenty-three. Ninety-two thousand nine twenty-three is the implementation cost. So that's working with the vendor to set the system up to meet our needs. What the plan will be is, we will put it in the school first. So this, this year, as we begin the budget process, Derek and I will run two budgets. We'll do the budget the old way, and we'll do the budget using Workday Adaptive. It will take us more time, but the hope is that going forward, we will then be able to use the new software. So that is our, that is our proposal, that we would use these funds that have already been put aside, and then we'll have, excuse me, we'll have an up-to-date software. And a couple of other things this software will do. As you know, each spring, I do the forecasting. That takes me a lot of time, I'm pretty good at it now, because I've been doing it for a while. But if I'm not here anymore, and someone else has to step in and do it for the first time, it's kind of tricky to do the first time. You get better at it as you move along, just because of the, you, you, the knowledge that you build up. But it's, it's a task that, once again, takes a lot of time, that with a new system, you, you could have a lot of it programmed in, and it would be a lot easier to do. Information would be much more available at your fingertips. And the other thing about this software, we have ASOP that we use for the subs, we have the AppleTrack we use for people applying to the district. And these are cloud-based softwares, just like this one. So the need for, they're easier softwares to learn, they're easier to implement, and then they're easier to manage going forward. You don't typically need a lot of help from the IT department. Things like Lawson and Cronos, these larger software products that are managed on the, at the city and the school IT departments. that are managed on the, at the city and the school IT departments, they require IT help. This product probably doesn't require much IT help at all. And that's, I think, another big advantage, so that the users are the people that will manage the software as time goes on. So I think it's, I think it's a great idea. And I think it will give us a lot better documentation, a lot better reports, and things like that. So hopefully, come this spring, you'll see the first of those reports. If the implementation goes well, but worst-case scenario, it would be the following year.
Hey, Paula, do you have any questions?
Yeah. On your paperwork, it says the annual subscription is $62,000. Is that after we pay the 154,923 for the first year?
Well, the 154,923 includes the 62 for the first year. Going forward, there will be that cost of 62,000, which we will share with the city. So the city will pay 31, we'll pay 31. After this first year, we will try to lock in a three-year subscription rate so that it won't increase every single year like software tends to. But if you think about it, compare it to the ASOP product that we use for subs. The cost for that for our IT department, they don't really do anything with it, so there's no internal cost, but we pay about 20, $24,000 a year for that, for that product. So this price of 31 is in the ballpark of an annual subscription cost for a cloud-based product like this.
Okay, I, it's about time that the district and the city started working together and sharing some of these things, because I remember when I was on the board the first time, I would say, why do we have a purchasing department at the city level and one at the district level when we could do purchasing together and get better discounts and share the costs? I mean, if you share the cost in each part of the budget, it's less money being spent, and you can probably get a better deal back then, and I'm sure you could do it now. Okay, I mean, I remember Mark Conrad and all his budgets that he used to put together for us. I mean, God, that man, I don't think ever went home. I think he probably slept in the office, is this the same office that he had? And in the boardroom, you know, people talk about, they don't want to go back to the boardroom now because it's so close, you know, at the high school. We used to sit right on top of each other. Not even social distancing. I don't know, maybe we had a pandemic or two back then, but we all survived, and we were healthy, and we did everything, and the kids were in school. Okay, do you want me to make a motion?
Sure.
I move that we accept the budget software as presented in the documentation. Is that good enough, Mr. Donovan?
Sure, maybe, maybe state the memo dated October 6, 2020.
Okay, memo dated October 6, 2020. The first year would be 154,923 dollars plus, what was it, 92?
No, no, that's the total.
Okay. The total cost of 154,923 dollars.
Accept the adaptive I started.
Workday adaptive software.
Workday, workday adaptive software. As in the memo.
Dated.
Yep, dated October 6, 2020.
Yep, in the amount of 154,923 dollars.
Okay. Okay. I'll second that, Paula.
Okay.
Okay. Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
And Mrs. Oden is yes. Okay, we're getting down there. Youth council contract.
Okay, youth council, two contracts. These have been at the same rate now for at least three years. There's two contracts. The first contract is for, they provide to our high schools. It's split between north and south, a master-level student assistance counselor. I think this goes back to Mrs. Kleiner's last year on the board when she suggested this. The initial plan was that we were going to hire a person, but 50,000 was put in the budget. We couldn't afford at that rate a person with this skill set. So we reached out to the youth council, and they have been providing that person to us. I believe they spend two days at each one of the high schools. It's actually an employee of the, of the youth council. But it's been a person. If you speak to the principals and the guidance folks at the high schools, they've been very, very happy with the results of that person. So that's the first one, and that is a contract for 50,000 dollars. The second one is for a, to provide a, typically, it's, it's the the, hold on one second. It's a suspension center that we were using for, for the children in grades five through eight. And we've used the youth council center for a long time, so when those students were suspended, they were mostly middle-school students, and they're suspended, they had somewhere to go instead of staying at home and watching TV or playing video games. So when I saw that this year, I said, well, since we're not at school right now, do we have a need for this? But they've actually changed their model thus far this year, and they're using it more as a learning center for students. There's a number of students that either don't have access to a computer or Wi-Fi, or they need some help and support. So the youth council has opened up this facility to use for that, since we're not suspending anybody in a, in a remote environment. So if you take a look at the memo, this is their, what they're, what they're providing this year is something a little bit different, but they are still providing us a service that comes in very handy for a number of our students, especially ones that have more needs than maybe other people do. So these are the two contracts. We've had very good success working with the youth council. They've responded very well to any changes or requests that we make. I spoke with Bob Chopa. He has the relationship with the folks down there. And like I said, it's, it's been a good group. So both those items are in the operating budget, and the same amounts as they were for the last couple of years. So the second contract is a total of 62,000 something. Yeah, 61,325 is the second one.
I have a question.
Sure.
On this learning center versus suspension center, which is not, do these students actually go into the center every day or several times?
Yes, they do. They go to the center, yes.
They go to the center?
Yes.
And do you know how many students they allow in the center?
They typically have between five and seven students per day in the center.
And that's per day, and nobody's tested positive for COVID there, huh? As far as we know?
As far as we know.
Okay, but are they willing to have more students in there than five to seven per day if needed?
Well, they couldn't be too large. I think the, I think they only have a facility that can only handle so many per I talk about the total, but they, there's probably no more than, just looking here. I don't know if they have a maximum per day. They talk more about how many students they deal with. Typically, they deal with 125 students during a school year.
I was reading that.
Yeah. So it's, like I said, it's usually the suspended students, so now that it's different, they can open it up. Can they open it up to maybe more than that? But I still think they're, they're around probably. I doubt it's more than 10.
Okay. Thank you.
I don't have any questions. I have heard nothing but good things about the youth council, so I certainly will support this. And for those kids that are going there, I think it's probably a real positive experience for them. Somebody there to help them out when they get stuck on something, or just try to keep them focused, so I think it's a worthwhile investment for those students. So would we want to move to approve the contract, the two contracts with the youth council? The first one is for 50,000, and the second one is for 61,325 dollars.
Yes.
I'll, I'll second that.
Okay. Mrs. Johnson?
Yes.
And Mrs. Oden is yes passionately. Okay. And, oh, we're getting down there.
I think we're almost at the end here.
The CARES Act.
Okay, this will be a quick one. This was just an update on the CARES Act. If you, the total amount, the total amount of the grants, 3,274,148. We've had approved 1,605 so far, and leaves us 1,668. We can spend this money through September of 2021. So for the most part, we'll spend most of it through this school year, and then if there's some left in the summer, we can maybe, you know, buy some more Chromebooks or things like that. I'm trying to sort of be careful on the spending here. If you look on the, on the page or I show the detail, it's been pretty much, this is where we're purchasing the 3,500 Chromebooks that we hope to get in later this month or November. And almost all of the PPE has been purchased using this, this grant. And there's storage totes for the elementary schools so that the, when the students are in the building, they can put their papers in those and then put them in the cubby. So when we do the spraying and cleaning, the desks will be clear of, of the typical, let's say, debris left by elementary students. So now, the one thing is, there's about 330,000 that potentially could leave and go to private schools. That was the initial intent or the instructions from the state. That has recently changed. So at this point, we're not giving those funds. We're going to keep those for the district. That could change, so I'm sort of keeping that. I'm not spending that money just yet. We should get a final answer on that pretty soon. But like I said, we do have, assuming students come back, we need more PPE, or we need more, we need other items. We still have about 1.6 million that we can spend the rest of this school year. So I've been trying to spend this wisely, not spend it all at the beginning. I've probably had requests to spend about four and a half million of this money, but I sort of pushed it off and said, let's sort of take it one step at a time. So that just gives you an idea of where we are with this. And this is, you know, part of the, the federal government CARES Act that is part of the COVID crisis that they gave through the state to the, to the individual school districts. Any questions on that?
I have a question. Who is making the decision on the 330,000 potential to go to private schools?
The state will make that. And initially, when we put the grant in, we had to include it, and then they turned around and said, okay, don't do that. You may be able to keep it. So it will be the state. I think through the federal government, it is a federal grant, so the state's getting direction from the federal government. But the last email I got two weeks ago said the funds will not be dispersed to the private schools.
Okay, thank you. I, I thought I read that somewhere. Thank you.
Yes, that's how it stands right now.
Okay.
But they've been known to change things at times.
Ms. Johnson, do you have any questions?
No, you asked my questions for me. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, that was informational, so no motion necessary. All right, we'll run into the transfer report quickly. First one is a $60,000 transfer. And what this is, is we had, we had a new hire for an SLP position for special ed this year. They weren't able to find a person for the position. So we were, to meet the needs of the students, we had to use a, an outside agency to provide the person, so we took the 60,000 out of the payroll line, and we moved it to a contracted service line. And then hopefully, next year, we'll be able to hire that person. We'll put it back in the payroll line. The next one is district office. This is to cover summer school. There was more interpreting expenses than usual because of the remote instruction format of summer school. So we moved from different accounts in summer school lines and put it to the additional hours line. The next one, Ledgestreet School, is just transferring between supply accounts. Actually, they didn't even have to do that entry, but they did. The next one is the curriculum office, and it's moving items from, from books to improvement services for trainings, as it says here, for the LLI training and the OGAAP training. The next one is the office of principal at the North High School. And it's, this was more of items that they didn't, part of it, they didn't budget the NISAC member dues. They didn't have that in their budget, so they moved that into the correct line item. And the other one was moving it from contracted services for some eBooks used during the remote learning. The next one is Mount Pleasant School, and that's just simply moving it from ed supplies to equipment. And they're going to be taking those funds for playground repairs. And the last one is also a assistant superintendent office. And that is the, they purchased three laptops for people in that group. So they moved it from a travel line, since they weren't going to be going to conference this year, and they put it to the computer line to buy the computers. Any questions on any of those?
Yeah, for the three laptops, how many people are in the office using them? Are they back in the office?
Yes. No, we're, central office is not open to the public, but it's been open since September, early September. So most people, if you have your own office, you're in every day. If you share an office, then you, you take turns. One person goes in Monday, the other Tuesday, or they split morning and afternoon.
Okay. So if you're splitting morning and afternoons, and every other day, well, let's do morning and afternoons. So what are you doing? Disinfecting the whole office in between?
The office isn't, no, it's, they're not sharing a desk. They're sharing an office.
I got it.
The disinfecting only takes place at the end of the day.
Okay, so I guess here's my question, because it's a loaded question. So if you're sharing an office, and one comes in and one leaves, and somebody, let's say, is sick, the germs could be in there, I guess, we're not fogging or spraying or anything around the room to make sure that there's no germs or anything?
I think there's only one office. It happens to be the payroll office where they're doing the morning and afternoon. I think for the most part, everybody else is doing every other day. So that would be the only duo where, and they're both pretty organized, safe people. It just works out better for them. It just works out better for them.
That's fine. I'm just, it's just that everybody's in such a panic over COVID nineteen that, you know, one would think that you want, if we only give kids two and a half days, half days, and they're there, doesn't matter, they're already in the building. You know, so it's not going to make a difference. If somebody's sick, it's going to be that they came in sick to begin with, whether cold, the flu, I hate to keep saying COVID because you know what? I just don't want people to be freaking out anymore about this whole thing. But if they came in with a cold like last year, it would have been there, whether they came in from nine to twelve or from nine to three, you're there. You're exposed to it. So I guess that's my question. That's fine. I'm okay with that. I'm just satisfied about that. Thank you.
Okay. Do you want to do, since it's got over the ten thousand amount, you want to do, uh, approve the transfer report for September two thousand twenty?
Right, uh, move to approve the transfer report for September two thousand twenty.
I'll second it.
Okay, on favor, Paula?
Uh, yes.
And Mrs. Oden is yes. Motion approved unanimously. Okay, and the last one is the financial report.
Okay, um, since it's been a pretty long meeting, and so I'll just do this very quickly. I'm looking at the, uh, second of the two reports, which shows the cost by month. Um, but keep in mind here, this is July, August and September year to date, July and August are the summer months, so the costs are much less, obviously. And so September is sort of your first month of the school year. Um, so just looking quickly at the salaries and wages, the six point three million, that is a typical cost per month when you have two bi-weekly payrolls and four weekly payrolls. So you'll see that probably most of the months, that cost should be around this six point three million. Um, I did look, you'll notice the overtime number is much higher than it was in the summer. Really what that is, is, uh, nineteen thousand of the twenty-seven thousand is, um, actually per diem for the guidance people. So it's not really overtime. It probably should, should have been put in the additional hours line, but it was put into overtime. In the contract for teachers, guidance counselors are paid their per diem rate for up to five days in the summer to come in and, and get schedules ready and things like that. So they typically come in a week or so before school starts, and we have to pay them a, uh, per diem amount. So that's pretty much what that is. It's at the height, that typically happens at the high school and a little bit at the, at the middle school. Um, you know, other than that, the retirement and separation pay line is four hundred and fifty-one thousand. I haven't had a chance yet to go back and sort of compare that, but that's probably most of the teachers, probably not all of them, but typically we see, uh, you know, August, September, October, most of the teachers receive their, 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 uh, separation pay amounts. Um, and then, other than that, I took a quick look at everything else. Um, not too much else to really speak of. Um, like I said, it's early. We'll go into more detail on this as the, uh, as the months move on. So I don't know if anyone had any specific questions about it, but.
I, I have one. Are we seeing any type of savings in telephone account?
Not yet.
Not yet, huh?
That's one of the. Take a look here. I have spoken to Greg about that. And we're going to sort of put that on the list. Make sure we do that this year because that's been bugging me.
No, that has. Especially seeing where we were supposed to save money.
Yes, so I think we've got to get in and get those lines. So I'll, yeah, when Greg, he's on vacation this week, but we have spoken about it. And, uh, I'll speak to him again next week. Maybe I'll have a better answer for you next month.
Okay, it looks like.
A question, please, and then.
Go, go right ahead.
Meeting is over. I have another question off topic from, um, Mr. Donovan. Um, okay, so the nineteen thousand for the guidance counselors now did to come in a week before they get into school, did they remote from home to do all the work or were they in the building?
I'm pretty sure, I, I don't know for sure. I'm pretty sure they were in the building though. Um, because I think they had to go in and what, what, what they had to do with the schedules and stuff, I'm not sure. They could probably do that from home. Unless they have the special access that some of us, uh, received, I'm not sure. I don't think they got it. So they probably had to go in.
Now, on the teachers, um, are they mostly remoting from the school now or are they home?
They're doing, um, some, if, I, I think it's one of those things, if you have a space in your house that works, some of the teachers are remoting there. But each morning when we go into the office, there's probably fifteen, twenty cars at Ledgestreet, which tells me that a number of those teachers are using their classroom to do the remote.
Okay, I was just curious. Okay, perfect.
I, I have a question. I don't know if you can answer it, Dan, but I go by Broad Street and there are an awful lot of cars there. Are they, uh, looking at, taking some of the special ed programs and combining them into one school? Or?
Well, it's probably a combination at Broad Street of the special ed. They have more special ed programs at Broad than they do at most of the elementary schools. So you've got that group. And maybe some like at ledge, maybe, because ledge doesn't have any special ed programs. Um, and they have that many cars, so there's probably some teachers using their classrooms to do remote also.
I should ask, I should ask Marsha was she, while she was here, because when I go by there, I just noticed there are an awful lot of cars. Um, and I thought, geez, I wonder if they're combining classes, kind of like what we're doing with the preschool to save people driving back and forth, whatever. Okay. I guess it's time for us to say good night.
Oh, no. Oh, no, 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 no.
No?
No, I said I have one more topic offline that I just have to ask.
Oh, okay.
Okay. Now, we've got the Chromebooks on order. Thirty-five hundred of them?
Yes.
Okay. So, Ms. Bishop, and I've been a stickler on this whole thing on the contract, which I got from Mr. Rodriguez. And it pertains in here to the school policy of destruction. Um, and what the school, you know, you know, we turn the Chromebook, discipline. Well, these kids aren't in school right now, so forget about the discipline. That could be thrown out the window. But Ms. Bishop sent an email uh, to Dr. Mosley and the board of that. I don't know if you've got to see it, but she said, and I thank her so much for doing the research, that Milford is making parents take out an insurance on the borrowed Chromebook through, um, WEF group for fifteen dollars for the year. Um, this might not cut down the cost of now ruined or broken equipment, but the cost on, on the district. Um, and this way, you know, I'd like to see what these policies are and look into this because, again, this is costing us money. Thirty-five hundred Chromebooks. And yet it come back in poor condition. And also, I mean, some of these students are getting it and they're not logging on and going to school. So there's a whole list of issues here that I really believe that has to be addressed here. And, um, this is the beginning of one, and then I think at curriculum, um, to address the rest of it, you know, with, these kids have the Chromebooks, they're not going to logging in or they're not logging into school per se. And what are we really going to do about all this? So, um, I'm hoping that maybe you could look into something like this or another company. Um, that the parents are going to have to ensure that so something happens, we don't eat the cost of this anymore. I mean, this is a big expense, whether it's CARE Act money or taxpayers' dollars, you know? People have to be responsible and kids have to learn at a young age and parents have to be responsible for this kids on these, um, technical devices. So that's what I wanted to end it with tonight.
Okay, I can, I can certainly reach out to Milford and ask them who they're using and then maybe see if there are things like that available. I mean, that, I think especially for the students that require more than one. Before I would even think of giving another one, maybe you'd require that insurance. It's probably not a bad idea. But I'll, I can look into it and, uh, report back at some point.
I know for some people fifteen dollars is going to be a lot of money. But on the other hand, when you have to start replacing all of this, it's a lot of money. And we can't keep having destroyed Chromebooks coming back. And we can't ask the taxpayers to keep paying for this because we have other uh, um, obligations that we have to use the money for. And we were talking about it tonight. You know, not to exceed millions and millions of dollars of work. So this is, might be a small drop in the bucket, but it's, it can become a huge drop in the bucket if we have to keep replacing them continuously. I appreciate it, Mr. Donovan.
Okay.
So that's it for me, Ms. Oden.
Okay, you can make the motion. I'll second it.
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
Uh, second. Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
And Mrs. Oden is a yes, Ms. Gensella is a yes, and Mr. Donovan's a yes. Good night. I'm sorry, this was another long night.